Participating on the telephone. And we have a special presentation of colors tonight from our West Bend Police Department Honor Guard. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, West Bend Honor Guard. Our first item of business tonight is the approval of our common council regular meeting minutes from April 15th, 2024.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is the organizational meeting minutes from April 16th, 2024.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlook and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have some oaths of office tonight, and I will invite our chief gum forward to start those.
Good evening. I want to first thank you, Mayor Council, for the opportunity tonight to present two West, two new West Bend firefighters for their badge pinning ceremony. Okay. So the fire service is known for a deep respect for the traditions and history of our service. Fire department badge pinning is ceremonial tradition that marks a significant milestone in a firefighter's career. The ceremony can occur when a firefighter graduates from academy, promoted to a new rank, or in this case, joins a new fire department. The badge itself not only represents the authority necessary to carry out the job of a firefighter, but more importantly, it's a symbol of our responsibility to our community and a statement of our commitment to public service. First off, I have firefighter Josh Shoup was hired with the West Bend Fire Department on November 6th of 2023. His wife Megan is here to be pinning his badge. He grew up in the West Bend area, and his parents still reside here. Currently resides in Colgate with his wife, two dogs, and two cats. It's quite a feat, I don't know if that'd work in my house. He was a longtime meat cutter and a family business in the area. And he enjoys outdoor sports and hobbies as a personal interest. He has a bachelor's degree from UW Milwaukee in marketing. He has previous fire EMS experience working part-time for the Richfield Fire Company.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Josh Shoup.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter paramedic.
As firefighter paramedic.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Will faithfully.
Will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have firefighter David Meyer. We'll have him step up, I guess, and do the oath.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, David Meyer.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter paramedic.
As firefighter paramedic.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tonight Deputy Chief Bystow will be doing his pinning. Firefighter David Meyer currently resides on a hobby farm in the town of Erin near Hartford with his wife and, this is not a misprint, 10 children. Enjoys hunting, fishing, hiking, as well as playing piano and card games. He's also an author of children's books. A U.S. Army veteran, he has previous experience of 13 years with the City of Milwaukee Fire Department as a firefighter and an officer, and previously also worked as a surgical assistant. We're very fortunate to have hired somebody with the experience and background of firefighter Meyer.
Congratulations, David and Josh. We're going to do some West Bend Police Department Police Officer Awards, so I'll invite Chief Dering to the front.
Thank you, good evening. It's always great to see two new career, careers start out in West Bend. Joint Public Servants with our team, our public safety team, and I'm glad our brothers are here, one to welcome their new team members, but also to celebrate Police Week and some department awards. So I remind you, next week is Police Week, National Police Week. Its intent is to honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice and paid their lives to make sure their communities stayed safe. It's not a very, it's not a small thing that we talk about, our sacrifices and commitment to our community, but to lose that, that someone's brother, someone's mom, someone's sister, someone's daughter. And so I ask that we take a moment to remember them. Thank you very much. Next week, I'd also like to invite all of you, on Monday, May 13th, we'll be celebrating the Midnight Piper here at the Police Department, 11:45 PM. It's past most of our bedtimes, but you can set an alarm. Come on down, join us right out from the Police Department. It's a national event that occurs, our Bag Piper, they do it at locations throughout the country at 11:45. It's quite moving ceremony, Bag Pipers, please join us there. Then also Thursday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM at the Fair Park Grounds is our annual law enforcement memorial service. I invite all of you to join us there again, another moving ceremony and a great tribute to all the officers throughout our county who protect and serve their communities as well. So please join us there. With that, I'll turn the mic over to my partner, Captain Rollinger, to read some of our department awards for our last year. But I would like one last editorial comment. You're going to see some great officers and hear about some great events, but it doesn't even begin, it doesn't even begin to paint the picture of what our officers do and our dispatchers do and our clerks and our CSOs, our crossing guards do day in and day out to live that commitment to protect and serve our community. I've told you many times, I've always been proud to be a police officer, but never as proud as I am right now to serve with such a fantastic team committed to excellence in policing, but protecting and serving the community of West Bend. So with that, I'll turn it over to Captain Rollinger.
Good evening, everyone. On April 1st, 2024, the Department Awards Committee met pursuant to department policy to review this year's department recommend, award recommendations. The committee is comprised of one lieutenant, one sergeant, one detective, one officer, one dispatcher, and one administrative clerical position. The committee reviews submissions from fellow employees for actions and performance of duty, which the employee feels deserve special recognition. Tonight, we are presenting seven life-saving medals. The criteria for receiving the award is performance of an act on or off duty which through prompt and alert action saves or endeavors to save the life of another. So with that, our first award, Officer Amanda Lemberger and Lieutenant Brian Scheringer, please step forward. On Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 5:21 PM, Officer Lemberger responded to Walmart for a report of an elderly man who had fallen in the store, was bleeding from the head, was semi-alert and conscious. Upon Officer Lemberger's arrival, she found the man had lost consciousness, was not breathing, and had no pulse. Officer Lemberger immediately began performing chest compressions while continuing checking for a pulse and signs of breathing. Officer Lemberger continued CPR until Lieutenant Scheringer arrived with an AED. Lieutenant Scheringer attached the AED pads while Officer Lemberger continued giving chest compressions. For over five minutes, Officer Lemberger and Lieutenant Scheringer performed CPR and delivered two shocks with the AED. Officer Lemberger and Lieutenant Scheringer were eventually relieved by paramedics from our partners at the West Bend Police Department, I'm sorry, the West Bend Fire Department. And prior to leaving the scene, paramedics advised that the man had a pulse back and was breathing. The man was transported to the hospital and was discharged three weeks later and has made a full recovery. Officer Tamara Cheek. On Sunday, October 1st, 2023, at 8:22 PM, Officer Cheek was dispatched to an address on Woodway for a report of a 68-year-old man having difficulty breathing and was unconscious. Officer Cheek was first, the first responder to arrive on scene. Officer Cheek located the man sitting in a chair, and he was unresponsive. Officer Cheek checked for a pulse and breathing and found the man was not breathing and did not have a pulse. With the assistance of the man's wife, Officer Cheek lowered the man onto the floor, and she started performing chest compressions for several minutes until the arrival of West Bend paramedics. Officer Cheek was requested to continue giving chest compressions while other medical interventions were being done by the paramedics, including at least two shocks delivered by the paramedics. Officer Cheek performed chest compressions for approximately six and a half minutes before being relieved. The man began breathing and regained a pulse. The man was transported to the hospital and has made a full recovery.
Dispatcher Ashley Wilson, Officer Mitch Welker.
Officer Colin Medved and Sergeant Joe Wenzler. On Sunday, October 8th, 2023, at 12:04 AM, officers and paramedics were dispatched to a resident of a 74-year-old man with chest pains and who had collapsed on the floor and was unresponsive. While working alone, dispatcher Wilson calmly instructed the man's wife through performing CPR until first responders arrived. Dispatcher Wilson was persistent with providing instructions and reassurance to the wife, which kept the wife calm and focused. When Officer Welker arrived and found the man unresponsive, he was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Welker began providing chest compressions followed by Officer Medved, who provided rescue breaths. Shortly thereafter, Sergeant Wenzler arrived and attached an AED to the male, ultimately delivering three shocks. The three officers and the West Bend Fire Department worked as a team and provided life-saving measures resulting in regaining the pulse of the 74-year-old Marine Corps veteran, Vietnam veteran, and the man survived in his home with his wife today. I have something I'd like to read. Whereas Congress has designated May 15th of each year as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week surrounding it is to be Police Week. This is a time to honor the memory of those officers who sacrificed their lives in service to the public, and whereas more than ever, our nation depends upon local law enforcement as our first line of defense, and it is important for citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and challenges of our law enforcement officers and agencies. And whereas we applaud our law enforcement officers for recognizing their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas our citizens value the courage and devotion with which our law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. Whereas on Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we express our gratitude for the selfless public servants who wear the badge and put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe, and we pay respect for those who lost their lives in the line of duty. Now therefore, I, Joel Auger, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby recognize May 18th, excuse me, May 12th through May 18th, 2024 as Police Week in the city of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation by flying their American flag at half-staff in honor of all fallen officers.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist and Alderman Allen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to all of our officers. Have a nice Police Week next week, and we think about you, not just during the Police Week, but every day of the year, for the sacrifices that you make for all of us, all of your families and all of us here in the city of West Bend. Thank you for all that you do. With that, the common council will stand in recess. I will call to order the licensing board of the city of West Bend. On our agenda tonight, we have approval of the regular meeting minutes of the licensing board from April 15th.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlook. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a Class B beer six-month liquor license for the West Bend Athletic Association and West Bend Baseball Association. And I didn't see any recommendations on that for denial, so I, and I'm quite familiar with the organization, so I will make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That adjourns the licensing board.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have seven items on the agenda. Item one is approval of minutes from April 15th, 2024.
Motion to approve, second.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Zingshaim, any questions or any additions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, approval of stormwater management practices, maintenance agreement W-24-01-North Dulge. Good evening, good evening, Mr. Newman.
Thank you. As you notice, I'm not Max, but I'm trying to fill his, filling his shoes tonight. So many of you that have been on this council before have seen this type of agreement. It's a stormwater practice agreement for a new development in Dulge Spa and Salon at 305 Jefferson Street. These agreements are required for the city's stormwater permit through the DNR. It kind of specifies whose ownership and maintenance requirements and those type of items. I'm happy to go through it further, unless if you have questions.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Zingshaim, any questions for Doug? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, award C-24-9, crack and joint filling of pavements.
Good evening again. The Engineering Department put a request for proposals for the 2024 crack and joint filling of pavements throughout the city. We received three proposals in return, and the low bidder is asphalt seal and repair at $102,699 for all alternate options of that contract. The Engineering Department also did a follow-up on references because this company has not worked in the city before, and we received four responses back of the five requests, and all of them were positive.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen?
Second.
Alderman Zingshaim, any questions for Doug? There are no questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Doug. We have item number four, Ridge Run Jim and Ann White Family Cabin renovations, permission to bid. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, and thank you. Sorry about that. This evening, our department is requesting permission to advertise for contract 24-11. This contract will include costs associated with the renovation of the interior and exterior of the Jim and Ann White Family Cabin located at Ridge Run Park. This contract will include door and window replacement, interior furnishings, lighting, electrical upgrades, exterior improvements, including a new entry portico, wood deck, siding repairs, and painting. And additional add alternate will be in the bid package for the possibility of a future sink and some cabinetry in there for a small kitchenette. Our park staff will assist with the demolition of the existing interior and site preparation and restoration. The final plans for this renovation were unanimously approved by the Park and Recreation Commission. The preliminary estimate for this project, the base bid is at $84,950. The add alternate estimate is at $10,580. Funding for this renovation has been pledged from an anonymous donor. If we receive permission to bid this project, bids would be due June 5th, and construction would be scheduled to begin late September 2024 with a completion date of March 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve, second. Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig, any questions for Mike?
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Go right ahead, Mayor.
100%.
100%. The anonymous donors already pledged or already donated $5,000 towards this project. We use that money to hire an architect and help us with some of those specifics drawings, things like that. So at this point in time, the donor is looking at supporting us 100%.
Wow. Yes.
Is the plan, Mike, eventually to rent this out for overnight stays, or?
No. So it's a three seasons cabin today, and it's going to be a three seasons cabin after we're done with the renovation. Without this renovation, we would be asking for capital funds, or the cabin would just sit until we would tear it down, basically is what it comes down to. So it's capital funds or nothing, or this wonderful opportunity. So again, very fortunate, West Bend is very blessed to have people that are willing to donate and support things like that. So if we are received or given a permission this evening, we would go out for bid. Once we have those bid numbers back, we would then sit down, review it with the anonymous donor, and see if they'd want us to move forward, et cetera, so.
I would like to comment, a great big thank you very much to the anonymous donor. It is just, that is just what the city of West Bend is all about. We've got so many people that do so much for the city of West Bend, and it just, a shout out is a thank you, thank you so much.
We're very fortunate.
Yes, we are. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any quest, are there any other questions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We have item number five, water utility rate review. Good evening, Ruth.
Good evening, John, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are here to present the findings of a financial forecast that was completed by Baker Tilly for the West Bend Water Utility, and to request permission to file an application with the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin to increase utility rates. This financial forecast serves as a tool used to determine the adequacy of the rates currently in place. The results of the financial forecast determine that an increase of 21.85% is necessary to meet both our operational and capital needs. It is noteworthy to mention that our current rates are among the lowest in Washington and Ozaki County. This increase would take her, take us closer to the mid-range of those rates. Effective on April 1st, 2021. The key factor and primary driving force behind the proposed increase is the construction of a water treatment facility to address PFOS contamination. The cost of this construction is $7.2 million. The West Bend Water Utility remains dedicated to providing safe and clean drinking water, and this facility marks a significant step in that direction. With an estimated completion date of spring 2025, this treatment plant reflects our continued commitment to public health. Several other factors contribute to the necessity of the increase. These include the construction of Wellhouse Number Five at a cost of $1.6 million, an overall increase in basic operating costs, and water main reconstruction projects. Recent water main projects include Laurel Drive South, Pennsylvania Avenue, and Downtown Main Street. Current projects are taking place on Maplewind Road, Butternut Street, and Hawthorne Drive. The total of these three projects is $760,000. The Water Utility diligently pursued funding to mitigate PFOS contamination in our water supply. We are fortunate to have been selected as the recipient of a $3.5 million principal forgiveness loan through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Safe Drinking Water Loan Program to aid in the construction of the treatment facility. Additionally, we have secured a low-interest loan to cover the remaining balance of the cost through the same program. It is important- It is important to note that without this financial assistance, the proposed rate increase would have been 26.89%. The utility rates require approval from the Public Service Commission. This approval process takes approximately six to eight months. At this time, we are requesting authorization to file the rate increase application with the Public Service Commission. I would now like to introduce Jody Dobson and Ryan O'Donnell of Baker Tilly to review the details of the financial forecast. Following their presentation, Jody, Ryan, Water Utility Manager Travis Thull, and I will be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I'm going to be honest, Ruth did a fabulous job of summarizing the reasons that we're here tonight talking about the water rates. I do want to give you a little bit of insight into the process that we've gone through to this point in time. In order to complete a rate application with the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, they have a very large application with a lot of information that they require for the commission to review. So we've spent a significant amount of time working with your team to gather all of the historical and forecasted information. So that's looking at revenue information, customer counts, usage patterns by rate class or type of customer. It's looking at the operating costs for the last several years, as well as what's projected for 2024, and then the capital costs that she talked about. What are the projects that are going on? Where will they be classified? How will that, will that be financed? And ultimately, how does that all fall into the rate picture? Need the cost to be recovered? So we have kind of a one-page summary here, and Ruth talked a lot about the factors that are driving this. It really is the construction cost in that PFOS facility is a big driver here. But if we look at that table in the middle, this is a way to kind of summarize and look at how does this fall in. So the PSC uses what's called the utility basis of ratemaking, and that says that your rates are designed to recover the operating costs of the O&amp;M of the utility, depreciation on your assets or infrastructure. So the idea there is as we've put those in over the life of the asset, we're going to recover that cost, the taxes, including the payment in lieu of taxes that's paid to the city, and then earn a return on your investment or a rate of return. And that rate of return really provides the cash flow to pay for interest when you have to borrow to construct projects or to provide financing for reinvestment in replacements and enhancements to the system as needed. So right now, we've got comparing here the last rate application that was completed, the test year 2020 that was done in 2019, and then the test year 2024 information. And so we can see that over that time, your investment in capital assets has gone up by 33%, and that's not unheard of. These are, you know, costs, a lot of it's behind the scenes or underground that we can't see, but it's really important things that we have to keep reinvesting in and maintaining. Over that same time, your operating revenues have increased about 9%. So that's continued growth, but we haven't changed the rates, so they can only go up so much. The operating expenses have increased about 20%. The depreciation, 23%, which is primarily driven by that increase in assets. And then the payment in lieu of taxes, which is also driven by the assets, has increased, I'm sorry, the total taxes, has increased by 10%. So that's payroll taxes as well as the property tax equivalent. So all of that means that currently, you'd be earning just a 2% rate of return, just over 2%. And the PSC says a benchmark rate of return. We've got on here 6.2%. That was the last we had checked. They do change that periodically, but it's really driven off borrowing rates. And so based on that, that's where we're coming up with this increase needed. And so as we really, as we look at those drivers and their rate methodology, it's that increase in capital costs, as well as the ongoing increase in inflationary O&amp;M costs combined that need to be recovered. And then at the bottom, we've got just for an average sample customer, obviously, the impact on every customer is a little different. What that projection would be is about 15, just under $16 a quarter increase. So I know you received a copy of the full study and application, but I didn't want to go through all those pages. I wanted to try to keep it simple.
Are there any, do we have a motion on the floor first?
Do we need a motion? What are we motioning here?
So the motion they're looking for is to approve the rate increase.
Right.
To file the rate application.
To file the rate application, sorry.
And when do we make the decision on the IRR? I mean, last time, I remember doing this in 2019, and, you know, it was like 0%, 2%, 4%.
That is on the sewer side. So the sewer utility rates aren't governed by the PSC, so they're addressed a little differently. What we get now is the authorization to file the rate increase application with the PSC, and we are bound by the rates that they set. They actually set and decide what the actual rates are that we charge our customers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, were you going to make a motion?
A motion to.
Okay. Who have a second?
Second.
All right. Now, are there any questions? There are no questions? Then we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Ruth. Okay, item number six, we have sewer utility rate review.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. In accordance with the city of West Bend Sewer Use Ordinance, Baker and Tilly recently completed a comprehensive rate study for the sewer utility to determine the adequacy of the rates currently in place. The study concluded that a rate increase is necessary to meet both operational and capital needs. Baker Tilly has offered several options for this increase. These options will be reviewed in more detail by the representatives of Baker Tilly during their presentation. It is noteworthy to mention that the current rates for the West Bend Sewer Utility are the lowest in comparison to surrounding communities. Even with the increases proposed, our rates would remain at the lowest in the area. The last increase in rates was effective January 1, 2020. The primary driving force behind the proposed rate increase is the sand filter rehabilitation project for phosphorus compliance. Compliance with regulations established by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources requires a significant investment of $6.3 million on this project. The sewer utility has followed the DNR's established nine-year compliance schedule, which included investigating options for phosphorus removal, economic impact assessments, and pilot studies. This project, which has been on the horizon for over 15 years and has been discussed during previous rate studies, is currently underway with an anticipated completion date of September 2025. Unfortunately, the sewer utility did not qualify for any state or federal funding to assist with financing this project. Several other factors contribute to the necessity of this rate increase. The wastewater treatment plant constructed in 1980 with a designed 25-year life requires ongoing major repairs to maintain operational efficiency and regulatory compliance standards. Infrastructure improvements are equally as important. Last year, sewer main replacement projects were completed on Laurel Drive South and Pennsylvania Avenue. Current projects include Maple Wine Road, Butternut Street, and Hawthorne Drive. The total of these three projects is $897,000. We coordinate these projects with the engineering department and the water utility so that all involved can realize a savings through cost sharing. The detailed information and historical trends presented in the rate study are important to provide, so all involved can remain informed and aware of current and future projects and allow for informed decision-making. With that, I would like to once again welcome Jody and Ryan to the podium to review the rate study. Following their presentation, Jody, Ryan, Sewer Utility Superintendent Steve Randall, and I will be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much again. So our process for the sewer rate study is very similar, gathering the historical and projected information with management and working through, looking at what do the rates need to recover, both for capital costs and operating costs. What's a little different is, as Ruth mentioned, you don't have the oversight of the Public Service Commission, that you have to follow their methodologies or their process. So you've got a little bit more flexibility here with the sewer utility. So what we've historically done with your sewer utility, because the DNR requires that you review rates at least every two years, when we look at rates, we'll look at a two-year process at the same time and say, you know, for this year, where should rates be? What are the revenues that are required to operate the system, as well as for the second year, to look at that. And so with these large projects on the horizon, what's presented to you in the one-page handout, the first column is the last time that rates were adjusted, and so from test year 2018. And that's just for comparison purposes. So the next set of three columns is test year 2024, what is needed. And so what we can see here is, while you see the net rate base may have gone down because of some contributions over that time, the plant in service, that top line, has really gone up. And if we look out actually to 2025, we'll continue to go up from those projects that we heard about. And so all of that requires then recovery of those costs, of the debt service as well that goes into those costs. And then we have a little bit below, the operating expenses, which we can again see for 2024 went up, 2025 not much higher than 2024. And then depreciation, we try to recover that, again, is that cost of capital. I'm sorry, yeah, recovering the cost of the capital. And so then, we see along the way here, the operating revenues did go up from 2018 to 2024, but not consistent with the other costs. So we have an operating income line. And what I want to focus on there is in 2018, we were slightly negative, very close to a break-even. When we look at 2024, that operating income is negative $411,000. So that's really where we're saying we need an increase. And this is where you have those options of what rate of return would you like to earn on your investment in the system? And remember that the higher the rate of return you earn, the more cash flow coming in available to make debt service payments or reinvest in your system. So we've presented three options consistent with the last study at 0%, 2%, or 4%. But I also want to point out that where the PSC is at is closer to a 6% based on borrowing rates. And so that's really what is presented here. So if we look just at the test year 2024 information and the 4% rate of return, it would indicate the need for the 30% increase. And then the second two sets there, the 2025 with or without, is trying to look at if we don't do anything in 2024, how much is going to be needed in 2025 versus if you do something in 2024, we're getting a step there, and then what's that incremental additional needed once the additional plant is on in 2025? So that's how we've presented the two options there.
Do we have a motion?
Question on the motion. Do we need to address things like the target IRR?
ROR.
IRR.
R.
Internal rate of return. In other words, do we need to have that included in the motion?
I mean, yeah, you're making the motion to set the rates, so you would be focusing on which rate of return and structure.
We're not tied to any specific rate here. These are just scenarios that were put together.
I mean, I believe you guys have a recommendation about what to do, but.
Yeah, it's my understanding, the motion tonight, you're going to make the motion as to what rate of return you would like us to see and what rates? And from that point forward, Baker Tilly will formulate the rates, and we will implement them. And I'm assuming if we get the authorization to do it in 2024, we would implement them June 1, as long as it's feasible with your schedule to compile the rates, and then we need to do the administrative work within the sewer utility. So you would determine which rates that you are authorizing us to move forward with.
Motion to approve a rate increase at a 5% rate of return that splits the 4% that's recommended with roughly 6% that the PSC has recommended.
And I think you also need to state if you want it to take effect in 2024 or.
Taking effect in 2024, June 1.
If you think that's, that would be fine. We could make that happen, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second so we can open up the discussion.
Yep. Okay. Any questions? Alderman Sternig, do you have a question?
I do have a question. So as we look at this, the largest driving factor, the largest impact on this increase is compliance with DNR regulations, correct?
That is correct.
Right. So it's not like we can go, well, we really don't want to do this. It's kind of like, no, we really have to do this.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mayor.
Could you estimate what 5% might be as a percent of a rate increase, based on your, would it be 40%?
I guess seeing it, 2% was at 20, and 4% is at 30. I mean, my very back of the napkin is 35% because we're going, we're not going from four to six, we're going from four to five, so it'd be about a 35% rate increase.
Can I also ask a clarifying question? That would be the increase for '24, and then in '25, we'd also have the additional one.
Yes, then in 2025, yes.
Is that what your motion was, Alderman Allen? Or was your motion for the 5% at the, in 2025, which would be more like 50%?
5% in 2024 for an IRR.
So a split, a split, '24 and '25?
We're setting two?
So you're either setting two, or you're setting the next tier down on Ruth's document shows 17.85, 29.24, or 40.62? That's if you enact, as they mentioned, it in 2025.
Yeah. There's a recommendation for a two-step or a recommendation for just 2025? Or an option for a two-step, which is larger, you know, that would be roughly 35 in 2024 and roughly 8.5 in 2025, or a 46% increase in 2025? Something along those lines. So just clarifying, which, the 2024 two-step is what your motion is?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yes, Aaron.
So what we'd be looking at is, if we go with what's laid out, is about a 35% increase just for 2024, and then it would drop down to about 8 to 8.5 in 2025.
So the rates would go up by roughly 35%, and then in 2025, they'd go up an additional roughly 8%.
Okay.
Because of the additional operating inflationary expenses and the additional projects that are put in place in 2025.
I'm going to clarify.
Alderman Sternig?
Similar to the numbers that you provided in the water side of this, do you have a sense of what is going to be the average quarterly increase in dollars for this type of an increase?
I say it's at the bottom, and it's in really tiny print. Give me a moment. So in 2024, maybe it's at $26? About $26 for the average in 2024, and then an additional, maybe 8, 8.50 in 2025?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? There are no more questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Jody, Ryan. Thank you very much.
Item number seven, we have relocation order, revised plat, safety improvement at three signal lights.
at three signalized intersections along State 33. Good evening, Doug.
Hello. Many of you have seen this document before, this relocation order. During the state review of this order, there was a couple of very, very minor language changes that needed to happen. In your memo, it says, you know, web code to We Energies, Wisconsin Belt to AT&amp;T. That's all the changes that they had. So recommend approving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions for Doug? There are no questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Doug. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
I call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. We have five items on our agenda this evening. The first is approval of minutes from the regular meeting on April 15th. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Allen. Any questions, clarifications, corrections that need to be made? None being said, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second agenda item, resolution authoring the transfer of YARC funds for payment of expenses. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. This evening, our department is requesting approval to transfer $559.75 from the YARC fund to an expense account for supplies for our Special Olympics program. As of March 31st of 2024, we had approximately $24,900 in this fund. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Buchlich and Allen. Any questions? All those in favor? Oh, sorry?
Just one quick question. That's obviously an acronym for?
The YARC acronym is for Youth and Retarded Citizens. It's for therapeutic recreation program, our Special Olympics program. The funding that's in that program are all donations that come to our department, to the city, that support our Special Olympics programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number three, resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Department. Hello again, Mike.
Thank you. This evening, we have some very impressive donations to present to the community and the common council. The first six donations this evening are sponsors for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The first donation is of $2,500 from the West Bend Community Foundation's West Bend Mutual Insurance Company Charitable Trust. The second donation is of $1,250 from Delta Defense. Dielectric Manufacturing, also a sponsor, at $1,250. Rust Arrow Group is again this year our presenting sponsor with a donated gift of $5,000 towards the children's mud run. The next donation of $1,250 is from Steiner Electric. And Killian Management Services is donating $1,250 as a sponsor for the mud run. These sponsorships are a huge help towards our mud run, financially support that event and that program. And in my opinion, it's a pretty cool kids' event. The next donation, not related to the mud run, is a $130 donation jointly given to us from the Knights of Columbus, Council Number 1964, and Judy Steffes for our Special Olympics. The next donation is a value of $12,450. This is a donation from our Friends of Lac Loran group out of the Conservancy. The Friends group paid for new footings and concrete deck going into our barn and a concrete ramp along the Marin Center, replacing something that was there. Again, we talk about different groups and organizations that support our park, rec and forestry programs in the city of West Bend. Our Friends of Lac Loran donate tens of thousands of dollars every year to keep that property moving forward and just keeping, managing all the maintenance and everything else on that property. So again, we're very fortunate to have an organization and volunteers such as that. The next donation of $500 is donated by Whitetails Unlimited for our archery range. Whitetails Unlimited annually donates funding for the maintenance of that archery range. A lot of times, that money is used for replacement targets and things like that. This last year, they donated $2,500 towards our youth archery program. The next donation of $180 was donated by Riverside Disc Golf Club for future work at Riverside Park Disc Golf Course. The last donation this evening of $261 was donated by the West Bend Friends of Park Recreation, West Bend Friends of Park Recreation for Women's Volleyball League Championship T-shirts. Many of tonight's donors annually support our park programs, park projects, recreational programming activities, links like that. Many of these names we hear over and over again. We're, again, very fortunate to have such givers and donors in our community. These gifts really help enrich our community. And in my opinion, donations and continued growth like this in our park, rec, forestry department really helps make West Bend a destination community. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you very much for that, Mike. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. And Seizer, thank you very much. Any questions or additional comments? Being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you again. The fifth, sorry, the fourth item on our agenda, accepting donations to the Fire Department. Chief.
Good evening again. We just have a resolution to consider acceptance of a $750 donation from the Home Sprinkler Coalition. This donation will use to purchase public safety messages on radio media this month for the encouragement of installation of home sprinklers for fire safety. This is one of Captain Aslan, in charge of our Community Risk Reduction Division. It's one of his passion projects, if you will. He works diligently to impact everybody's fire safety in their home through the installation of smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, and of course, fire sprinklers, because we know that fire sprinklers in the home can avert major disasters. So I would ask your consideration for this donation.
Motion to approve.
Second. Zingshaim and Berquist, thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
Just a quick comment.
That's okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Just a quick comment. If anybody feels strongly about this, I suggest you talk to your state senators and assembly persons, because right now, there is no way for any organizational unit to do other than advocate. There's no way to change our municipal code to require these in places where they make a lot of sense. And so I would, you know, if you have a, if you want to join Kenny in his passion project, I would recommend that course of action, because there's no way we can say, you know, in a big building with lots of people in it, we should demand sprinklers, and we can't. And that's because of the state law, the way it stands now.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was going to ask, where do you purchase these public safety messages? Where are they broadcast or?
He had two radio stations. I failed to write them down for this evening, but it was two of the local radio stations. I believe one of them was a country music radio station. He had limited resources to do so.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our fifth and final item on the agenda is a resolution to accept Wisconsin Department of Tourism Joint Effort Marketing Grant Funds. Welcome, Jess.
Good evening. I'm pleased to present this resolution for you tonight. BAC Fest was a new event that took place in March of 2024. This event was supported by the Tourism Commission first, with the $20,000 new major event grant for getting it off the ground. So the Communications Department took on an application to apply for marketing funding with the Wisconsin Department of Tourism and received $15,000 to support BAC Fest. And that really allowed the city to promote the event outside of West Bend and far outside of it. We brought in visitors and reached visitors from over 20 states who registered and attended BAC Fest. Actually, 38% of all of the attendees, which was over 1,700 attendees, were from outside of Wisconsin, and then many throughout the entire state. So without that funding, we probably would have done a lot more just local targeting for marketing efforts. But instead, we were able to have billboards in Madison and Green Bay and digital advertising, and it really made a huge difference. So thank you to the Wisconsin Department of Tourism for this grant, and thank you to the wonderful staff and volunteers that we had who made this event a success. We had over 100 staff and volunteers work that day and in advance of it.
Motion to approve with the thanks of the city to the state for supporting this grant.
Second. Thank you, Ellen and Zingshaim. Any questions for Jess or additional comments? Other than it was a tremendous event, and I think everybody had a wonderful time at the event, as well as after the event, at many establishments throughout the city of West Bend, who are also great partners in making it more than just the time at Regner, but exposing participants and those who traveled here to the entire city of West Bend and everything we have to offer. So thank you. With there being no further questions or comments, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
All right. We will reconvene our common council meeting. We have the consent agenda in front of us, items five through 15.
Excuse me?
Motion to approve.
Before you, I need to break out the Athletic Association license. I need to abstain on that. I'm a member of the board.
Okay. Yes.
Which item is that?
That is number five.
West Bend Athletic Association.
Consent agenda, item number five.
Okay, so we'll pull item number five out of the consent agenda, and I will ask for a motion on item six through 15.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. And so we've got a motion on the floor, Alderman Sparts, without that item currently, item six through 15. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now take up item number five in the consent agenda, the Class B, six-month license for the West Bend Athletic Association and West Bend Baseball Association. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. Any more comments, questions, discussion? All those in, yep.
Do we want to do a roll call, just so it's?
Sure. We can do a roll call vote. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderwoman Seizer?
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Abstain.
Abstain. Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
And Alderman Buchlich?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Seven with one abstention. Yep, thank you very much. Our next item for consideration is the appointment of Assistant City Administrator Jessica Wilds to the Mid-Merine Municipal Court Administrative Committee. Jay, why don't you tell us about that?
Sure. The Mid-Merine Municipal Court in, that serves West Bend, is a two-county court system. We have an elected part-time judge and a court clerk and staff. And then the appointees from the different municipalities are appointed to their board. I had the pleasure of serving on their board for a long time. I'm coming off, I'm serving on the HR committee, and as treasurer, and my term expires in, at the end of June. Kathy has approached Jess about the possibility of her serving in that capacity in the future. And I think it's, she's not trying to kick me off, she just wants a chance to have somebody else serve. So I didn't do anything wrong. I did, I did serve my time as treasurer, though, and my term is now no longer. So I am recommending Jess to serve on the HR committee. She oversees human resources here, and I think that's a really good fit and will be a good opportunity for Jess. So it's my recommendation to have me come off of that board and for Jess to go on it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Jess. And we'll move on to our reports. Alderman Sternig, go ahead.
Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, if you will excuse me for the bounce of tonight's meeting, I am actually going to run to attend the West Bend Collins Scholarship Awards this evening. My son is a senior graduating from West Bend West and is receiving multiple awards, so I'm hoping to get there yet in time before he walks across the stage. So.
You are not excused. I'm kidding. Congratulations to your family and your son.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You better run out there. That's a good, good thing you better be at. Our reports tonight will start with Parks and Rec Commission from April 25th. Alderwoman Seizer?
Thank you, Mayor Ongert. Rec, well, a lot of things going on at the park this time of the year, of course. The first thing I want to mention is Regner Park, they had an excellent presentation by an eighth grader from Holy Angels. And in cooperation with Gears and the National Interscholastic Cycling Association, the NICA, they approved a permanent mountain bike course in the woods west of the beach house. It's a fairly easy mountain bike course, about 2.2 miles. It will be an excellent training course for newer riders and a great opportunity for other riders in the community. It'll be created and managed by Gears and NICA at no cost to the city. And they will keep a clear separation of hiking and biking trails. They plan to complete this by July of 2024. Their skate park, they have narrowed potential locations for a new skate park down to six. They'll be visiting sites, and they'll report more on that in May. The Friends of Park and Rec now is registered as a nonprofit, which is a big accomplishment for them. Summer programs are in full swing. Summer sports are in full swing. The summer nature camps are full. Some have waiting lists. Youth theater and tennis leagues are full. The youth theater had 40 spots, and that was filled within two hours. So we need, we need more classes, I think. Employers, Park and Forestry Department has seven summer seasonals hired, and they could use four or five more. Regner does have 35 lifeguards lined up and about nine, 10, or 11 beach attendants as well. Tree planting crew is busy, 274 trees going in this year, 45 at Regner, and 40 line along the new Riverwalk West. Upcoming events, things we all should do and participate in. May 11th, of course, the plant sale at Lac Loran. They have 6,000 plants available. So they'll be open from 9 until 1. So go and buy your plants. If you miss that, the next week, Roots and Branches has their plant sale, the 17th and 18th. And finally, there's an event coming up at a beer garden at Regner Park, at the beach house, Friday, May 31st, Saturday, June 1st. Disc golf available, Noshnook food truck, cornhole tournament, music, and of course, beer and food. So lots going on at the Park and Rec Department. Support, support all the new events.
Very good. Thank you, Alderwoman Seizer. Our Tourism Commission, Alderman Allen?
Yes, we had a full house. All members of the Tourism Commission were present for the meeting. First item up was a review, was a review of the BAC Fest, which was our major event from last year. It's a departure from most of the events in that it was our, I think, our first adults-only event. And that was very positively received by people who attended. The committee that put it together talked about issues they'd had and how they looked to change those in the future. And so we were, we were really happy we did BAC Fest. We followed that with the selection or reviewing for applications for other major events that people were looking at. And we selected the, let me get this correct, it's the Downtown West Bend Association Global Fest Around the Bend event. And this is, this will be early in 2025. It is basically a multicultural street party around It is basically a multicultural street party around downtown. So we're looking forward to it. It's, think of it as, you know, rolling German Fest and, and Casa, the, I can't remember, Casa Guadalupe's event and, and all of those sort of into one. And so we're looking to come up with a real multicultural event. So we're looking forward to that. We set a timeline for the fall and winter event participation. That, that announcement's been made and we will be evaluating those at our next meeting on May 28th at noon in the council chambers. And then we talked, we, about the Hunden Project and John McGivern's Main Streets television show. The Hunden Group will be coming to town May 1st, or actually, they would have come to town by now. They're looking at doing a feasibility study for a convention center or hotel-type venue in West Bend. And then also John McGivern's Main Streets television show will be filming later this summer, or later this summer or early autumn for broadcast in 2025. So we're gonna, we're gonna make the big time
Yeah.
For downtowns. And that was it.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Allen. Our Airport Commission, Alderman Sparts?
Yes, we met on February, I'm sorry, we met on April 22nd. We reviewed our minutes, approved those from February 20th. We approved the airport hangar lease and design concept, design for lot 37 with a couple of stipulations, I think, and those are going back to probably the Plan Commission next. So we'll be seeing those down the road with the council. We also reviewed the notification letter for the tenant, the annual inspections for the hangars. The airport director and fire department go around and do their annual inspections. So we want to notify the tenants who need access. We had discussion and gave Mike the approval, Mike is the airport manager, gave him approval to proceed to look into the security system, videos and access for the airport, which is mandated by the Federals, FAA. And then Mike gave us an annual, his monthly report or his quarterly report on what his activities were. And he is a very pretty man for a part-time airport engineer. He has a good thing going on. So, I'll leave.
Thank you. Library Board, Alderman Burquist?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on April 16th. You guys remember that day. That was the organizational meeting and everybody at the meeting wondered why I was dressed up and I told them that it wouldn't happen again and we laughed and I said, what a team. As is our practice, the meeting began with the Pledge of Allegiance and approval of the consent agenda. The financial report followed, which included donations from Glacier Hills Credit Union, The Lynch Dealership in Town, The Gentle Dental Office, and Cornerstone Dental. The donations will be used for library programming. Thank you very much, everyone, for their generous donations. Library Director Steve Theory added information on fund balances from last year. Steve updated the board on the status of the outreach program's delivery vehicle lease. Also noted was the amount of interest the library's been making on some investments lately. Higher rates equals more books. That's always good news. The Library Director's report actually provided information on our camera system purchase and installation. Quotes since joining with the city's contract have been favorable for the library. Also, we got, or they got new telephones, which Steve calls a learning opportunity. I don't know what that meant, but they're working through it. Okay. There were a couple of Eagle Scout projects happening at the library. Gardening, as you know from past reports, has been very popular this year. The recent book sale went well and last but not least, there are issues with drainage on Patrons Park. Always something going on. The Library Board President reported kudos to Board Member Jay Wright for the book he wrote, Making Top Shelf. That's the highest of ratings at the Public Library Association's National Conference held in Columbus, Ohio. Congratulations to Jay. Deb also reminded us that, that the board member, or reminded the board members that next month is the election of officers. Next on the agenda for consideration, there was only one, the camera system we spoke about earlier. Again, we received a great deal for, with partnering, partnering with the city's contract, saving money and increasing storage capacity. I'm sure Chief Dearing can attest to storage capacity being one of the most important aspects of a camera system. The board approved the purchase from using undesignated fund balance. The next meeting is scheduled for May 21st. All are welcome to stop in, see your library board in action and check out the library itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Our dear management committee, we're going to push that to May 20th. Sounds good. Couple of things, I attended the past couple of weeks, really nice groundbreaking at Forte Bank over by Steins. If you haven't checked it out, it is right under, right in the middle of construction and there's a nice picture of what the bank will look like on the sign. If you want to see even more drawings, you can look at some Plan, Plan Commission meeting minutes of that, it's going to be great. I was out of town, but I know Jay and Jess attended the Emory groundbreaking down there by the old West Bend Transit location, again, under, under major demolition, I believe, at this point in time. I drank a lot of beer this weekend at 18:40. If you haven't checked it out, it is wonderful. My wife and I sat on the patio just yesterday afternoon and it's, it's, it's open and it's awesome, so. Any other future agenda items, comments, questions? Go ahead.
Bid board meeting tomorrow morning, 8:15, right here.
Yep.
We will be electing officers for the next year.
Great. We have a Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night, right here at 6 o'clock. Our next common council meeting is on May 20th and I'm sure there's plenty of other committee, commission meetings in between. Make sure you check out the meeting calendar online. Any other comments for the good of the order? If not, that is the end of our agenda and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.